All right, it's seven o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting of the board of selectmen to order. We do have a town meeting tonight that is required by charter to begin at 7:30, so we'll break from our business at that point in time. I do have three items that I need to add as new business under nine. First is 9D, I'd like to add as an appointment of a deputy first selectman, which is required by charter. 9E, I'd like to add an authorization for the beta group contract, which is the group that's conducting the master plan on our behalf. And 9F is the authorization for the Greater Together Community Fund fiscal sponsor agreements. If I could have a motion to add those, please. So move, is there a second? Motion made by Charlie, seconded by Marie. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pledge allegiance, Sarah, would you like to lead us?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Despite it all, I think it's nice to have a quick meeting. All members of the board of selectmen are here in present. Our first item of business is the approval of minutes for October 21st.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Are there any corrections? I do have one. On page eight, C1, the appointment of Jim Richards to the Arts and Culture Commission. That term should say that it expires April 21st, 2021. So we just make that change. Any other changes?
Did you ever decide if that's going to be a committee?
Whatever we set it up as.
You said, you were, well, either that or change.
Yeah, I need to readdress that, but not for tonight. Any other corrections? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed, no. And then the special meeting minutes from October 28th. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made by Marie, seconded by Sarah. Any corrections?
I just was, seven, after the vote and discussion, I would just like to the record to show my comments that I made during that meeting. You were.
Do you have?
Yeah, it was that I was thanking Sergeant McNeese for nearly seventeen years of service to the town of East Windsor and just that I wished him the best, but that was left out of the presentation.
Suburbaments we all share. Okay, so any other corrections to the minutes? Motion to accept the minutes, a motion has been made to accept the minutes as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? I'll be staying. Thank you, Charlie. Oh, the participation, this is one of two opportunities for the public to address the board. I'll start, I don't think there's anybody online. I'll start off by asking if there's anybody here present who would like to address the board of selectmen. Okay, there will be another opportunity later in the agenda. I don't have any communications. We'll move on to agenda item seven, C. We have two appointments to consider this evening.
I'll make a motion that we appoint Albert Stigler to the Arts and Culture Commission, whatever the determination is.
I haven't had a chance to check what it's supposed to be, but I get the, I get the point. That's clear in the minutes. You're moving the appointment. Is there a second?
I moved the appointment. I'll second that.
I just, I would just say that I'm glad to see Mr. Stigler stepping forward. I think that he has some, some experience that will be valuable to the group and it's always nice when we get to have some new people involved, so I'm glad he stepped forward. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
opposed? David Swain for position on the zoning board of appeals.
I'll move to appoint David Swain to the zoning board of appeals as an alternate member for a term expiring November 21st, 2023.
For a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
opposed? So. Okay, so November 1st has come and gone. And with that closes the comment period that Prague was soliciting for the draft of the Route 5 study. When Promote was here last week, he asked that after that period closed, that there were no comments to consider that we accept or we move the resolution I'm handing out, and that I think was so that they can forward this onto the Prague Transportation Committee and the Prague Policy. And that would wrap up the study and then it would become something available for funding opportunities as they present themselves. I did hear from Promote that there were no comments that were submitted after our last meeting. So what they presented to us, they're asking that we accept in final form. I have a motion to approve the resolution as presented.
There was a couple of questions to ask at this meeting. If anyone was new, if you didn't look by Alan, if they want clarification on on the double highway and.
Well, he answered that within the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I wanted to know that, you know, kind of the way they had to separate in the segments, it kind of put the worst segment or the worst section of the whole street in between segments and it didn't capture in picture what, what.
As long as you're back in the chair.
Yeah, I did.
Okay. Okay. So can I have a motion to authorize? Can I have the resolution and authorization to sign?
I'll move that we accept the authorization resolution for adoption of the Route 5 corridor study from Prague and authorize the first selectman assignment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, 8E is a resolution I asked to be tabled at the last meeting. It's an agreement between the Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security and the town of East Windsor that effectively authorizes a portion of what would be allocated to town of East Windsor for homeland security purposes to be diverted to Prague to be part of their regional response team. The areas that I had questions about, they followed up with the chief Lisa pertaining to the discussions around assets. And that is speaking to the regional availability of certain assault weapons. In need that there's a response for the regional response team. Chief DeMarco did confirm to me what my suspicion was that this is a pro forma resolution that has simply been changed, so this looks similar-ish to what we did in the past, but it is not the same. The content of it is the same, it's just the way it was, the drafting and the presentation was up here. So, I'm satisfied with this. If anybody else has any questions or comments, otherwise I'd play the motion to accept or to make the resolution identified on the first page and authorize the town court to fix the skill.
Make a motion, authorize the resolution of the town. On the approval.
On the resolution.
The result of Tom's further management to end of level to the state of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security. Any and all documents which is deemed to be necessary and appropriate. Further removal of Jason E. Bowser as first selectman of town of East Windsor, authorizing directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the board of selectmen to do and perform all acts of things which seems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the charges of such documents, including what now limited to executing and delivering of agreements and documents contemplated by these documents. You understand for this exercise, the case of Bowser now holds an office post selectmen and any of his held in office since September 19th.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Budgets. Yeah, that's crazy. We're not doing the budget yet, although I know both Sarah and Charlie, you guys have some tight constraints in the February month, so we'll work with both when we get to it. But the first order of business is going to be the submission to boards and commissions and eligible applicants, the budget letter. And typically this is issued on behalf of the board of selectmen and board of finance. So I talked to Chairwoman Corso and based on the way the calendars fall, we're going to get this out sometime and opportunity for boards to submit the information. We're going first. Though, so you have before you a draft that I updated from last year. There is, there are a couple of points that need to be kind of policy determinations. And then we'll make our, I'll transmit our recommendation to the board of finance and then we'll do with it what they will. And then once in final form, it'll go out and department should have a lot of money to put their budgets together. So, the drafting is shown in red, in the red line, the edits are shown in the red line, but I did leave in the third paragraph the budgetary considerations open. And I'm not sure what our thought process is on where we want the targets to be. Sometimes we've used no, no, no new initiatives. Sometimes we've used within 2% of the budget, sometimes we use, you know, whatever the framework is that we're going to work with. So I didn't want to speak for you four. I wanted to bring it to you so we could have that conversation about what, if any, target we wanted to have. Our collection rates over the last five years have been very strong. Our fund balance is very healthy. We typically return money to the general fund. So I just wanted to throw to you guys what you wanted that target to be and then we'll negotiate it with board of finance.
Did we go with that 2% number last year?
Yes. And it's in the red line, you can see it there.
I would say with our healthy fund balance and everything, we should stick with the 2%. We know a lot of the public are concerned that we don't have the 2% last year, we have it down, but we zero besides the contractual stuff. So, I think if we all, whatever we decided, long to get out the public that we are in good shape as far as putting our taxes in everything else, because if we go with the 2% again, we might.
Well, just because that's what the request will say doesn't mean that's what the determination would be once we see the whole picture. So do you guys, are you guys comfortable with that? You want to stay, you look like you have a comment now?
No, I was just going to say, I agree with sticking close to that 2%, you know, initially, just, you know, everybody says that inflation is going to go away magically, second quarter next year. I'll believe it when I see it. So people's costs are going up on really everything. So I do think we need to keep it tight again.
Agree with everything Alan said.
So stick with two and then we'll see where we end up? Okay, and I'll restore that. Other comments? Yeah, you're right, there should not be. We're grabbing. Okay, and I'll make those changes and transfer them to Geraldine, who should be right on schedule. Okay, so there was, I think it was you who had asked last time if we could mix up the liaison assignments for the new board. And that seems like a perfectly reasonable, this seems like a perfectly reasonable opportunity to do that. So I've put together the list of the boards and commissions that I believe have either liaisons now or in need for them. One, I did put it on, I was going to say the water company one, I thought I excluded, but I think you're the only one who's eligible to do that. Because you need to be a water company customer and I think the rest of us are unwell.
I'm property there, so.
That's, that's on Connecticut Water?
Yeah.
Okay. So what I thought we would do is
But he can have.
What I, what I thought we would, we could do is just go down the table, everybody gets to make a pick and then we'll go back.
Okay, you're not, you don't have either fire on.
It's because they went on, okay, yes, you're right. So that was above.
Yeah, I already brought in. The warehouse point fires the first Monday of every month. Unless it's a holiday. And Broadbrook Fire is the first Tuesday to the first Thursday. I knew that was going to hit you. The first on Monday. Okay, now, well, I mean, as far as pension goes, I'm the chair now. I think I should probably stay on that board. I'm a member of Wetlands. Somebody else can be the liaison, but it seems kind of double duty, so I should probably keep that. I just got on Broadbrook, so I'd like to stay there. Other than that, I'm open if anybody wants to do anything else, so I'll leave it at that for now.
What was the third one?
Broadbrook Fire.
Yeah.
So. So what's your?
I took those three. As my opening salvo, I give three picks, right? First place from Latin, no, it's not that.
Sir.
I was interested in police commission since I've been going, but that's quite all right. I'll stick with veterans if possible. I would take on economic development. That would be okay?
Charlie, so I'll take warehouse point fire, because I'm on it. I would like to do BMX if they actually decide when they're going to meet. Oh sure, pick that one. I cycle more than you, I should do. See, I got a poet tone. Let's see, I had diversity before, I had police before. I didn't see anybody volunteer for the law far, just like.
Well, we haven't gotten that yet. Ritz Washington. Okay.
So we'll start with those two that I would like. Now, it's back to me?
Yep.
So I already got my first three, right?
Yep.
Do you want me to skip this time?
No.
So I'd like to stay on planning and zoning, yes.
Okay. Sarah, this is fun. This is like a fantasy football draft.
I do like Board of Education, but I'd be willing to split it since it does meet twice a month. If someone would want to take like the fourth Wednesday or not, I could stay on that.
Yeah, I can split that. If it's the fourth Wednesday, I'll split it.
So I'll do the second and you do the fourth?
Yeah.
Okay.
Marie?
Oh, get it, I wanted to go to findings. I thought water pollution can, oh, wait, the last one's in the month. I'll take water pollution control.
They actually didn't have less. Our last term, they actually didn't have a liaison.
I think right now they're sticking to total zoo unless you're, yeah, unless you're a commissioner or something, yeah.
Al, back to you. No, it's like, you had yours. Okay, board of finance, yeah, all right. Well, agriculture and conservation, does anybody want that? The two of them, the same night, one's at 6:30, the other's at 7:30. It usually ends up where you have 20 minutes in between them, it's kind of a pain that way, but anybody who doesn't want it all, take it.
Agriculture, what, what?
Conservation.
Sarah.
I would be interested in Arts and Culture Commission, but I know, they haven't met and I know you had suggested Marie for that, so I don't know if she would object. Okay.
Yep. Marie? Well. Right. Nobody?
Which one was that?
Diversity. Charlie. Just a trade later. Parks and Rec, ZBA, Historic Preservation Commission.
Oh, he took it.
Yeah, because I'm a member, so I'm already there.
Now, we're going to have to start over now. Still your victory.
The parking lot.
Yep.
Hopefully never meet.
Meeting next week, for sure.
It's like, it's literally like once it goes a year.
Well, I can. Chair. Selectman Baker.
CIP.
Good move. That was, that was, that's a good pick this late in the draft.
Couldn't believe it was still out there. It's like a second round.
Sarah.
I was looking at the, I was looking at the position.
I'll take, you can have it. I'll change you to something.
Diversity.
You'll take the first?
Either way. Just let me know what I need to.
You got diversity.
Oh, I'll do Parks and that.
Their leaders are very short.
So is the version.
What did you switch?
Marie.
I have diversity, she's got CIP.
Thank you.
Back to you. You.
Who took Parks in it?
Sarah.
Historic Preservation Commission?
That's also a sleeper pick. Good job. Charlie? Are they?
I've already been on.
Ellen, you took conservation?
Yes.
I was just suggesting it, you can have it if you want it. Just.
You've already got it.
Well, it's just if you take it, you should also take ag because they meet the same night. That's why, that was my point there. I figured.
Again, so Charlie, still on the board for you is Assessment Appeals, Building Commission, Elderly Commission.
I'll take building.
Alan.
Elderly.
That's essentially non-functional.
Which second comeback?
Oh, you haven't seen the quiet stuff out there.
He's taking elbow.
So that leaves, Sarah gets Assessment Appeals.
It's mine.
All right, so I have, I have as follows. I've got ag commission is Alan. Arts and Culture, Sarah. Word of Assessment Appeals, Sarah. BMX, Charlie. Building Commission, Charlie. CIP, Marie. Connecticut Water Company Advisory Council, Charlie. Conservation Commission, Alan. Diversity Council, Alan. EDC, Sarah. BOE, Sarah and Charlie. Elderly Commission, Alan. Board of Finance, Charlie. Historic Preservation Commission, Marie. Housing Authority, Marie. Wetlands, Alan. Parks and Rec, Sarah. Pension Board, Alan. Planning and Zoning Commission, Alan. Police Commission, Marie. Veterans, Sarah. WPCA, Marie. ZBA, Charlie. Robert Fire, Alan. Warehouse Point Fire, Charlie. That's it, that will be our assignments for the next. All right, so it's 7:28. We have a town meeting that starts in two minutes, so I'd like to ask for a motion to recess the board of selectmen meeting till after the town meeting. So move. Second?
Second.
Made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Okay, we are, the board of selectmen meeting is in recess, but we can be in the town meeting. At 7:30, I'm going to call the town meeting to order. Our first item of business is the election of a moderator and their nominations.
Jason Bowser as moderator, Sarah Musco, 25, from the afternoon.
Are there any other nominations? Is there a motion to close nominations?
Motion to close nomination, down, Baker, before you write.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor of opposing nominations, please say aye.
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 All in favor of Jason Bowza as moderator for tonight's town meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm now gonna ask the town clerk to read the town meeting public notice, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Warning, notice of special town meeting, East Windsor, Connecticut. All electors and persons qualified to vote in town meetings of the town of East Windsor, Connecticut, the town, are hereby warned and notified that the Board of Selectmen of the town are convening a special town meeting to be held via Zoom pursuant to the instructions sent forth below at seven thirty PM on November fourth, two thousand twenty-one for the following purpose. Item one, to consider and discuss the sum of thirty thousand dollars from the town's unassigned general fund balance is hereby appropriated for the purpose of a one-time household hazardous waste collection and disposal event dated at East Windsor, Connecticut, this twenty-seventh day of October, two thousand twenty-one. East Windsor Board of Selectmen, Jason E. Bowza, Marie De Souza, Sarah Muska, Alan Baker, and Charlie Nordau.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm now gonna read the eligibility to vote in tonight's town meeting. At any town meeting or other, at any town meeting other than a regular or special town meeting. Excuse me. At any town meeting other than a regular or special town election or any town meeting of any fire, sewer, school district, or any other municipal subdivision of any town incorporated by any special act. Any person who is an elector of such town may vote. And any citizen of the United States over the age of eighteen years or more who jointly or separately is liable to the town, district, or subdivision for taxes assessed against him on an assessment of not less than one thousand dollars in the last complete grant list of such town, district, or subdivision, or who would be so liable if not entitled to an exemption under Connecticut general statutes, subdivision seventeen, nineteen, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-five, or twenty-six of section twelve dash eighty-one is entitled to vote unless restricted by the provisions of any special act relating to such town, district, or subdivision. May I have the resolution, please?
Item one, to consider and discuss the sum of thirty thousand dollars from the town's unassigned general fund balance is hereby appropriated for the purpose of a one-time hazardous household hazardous waste collection and disposal event. I move foregoing resolution made on.
Motion made by Alan Baker, three forty-one Rice Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Just gonna say one eighty-seven. Motion made by Alan Baker, seconded by Karen Pedro. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Yes, ma'am.
I just have a question, again, same name and address. Is this a collection from our houses, or is it like, do we have to go to Chalm Road like we do with the boat?
It won't be at Chalm Road, it'll be at the Department of Public Works, and there'll be, we're gonna contract with an environmental professional company to aggregate the, the household waste, and then they will take it off and dispose it, so.
Okay, but we have to bring it.
That is correct, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution is carried unanimously. With no further business to come before the town meeting and ask for a motion to adjourn.
Move, we adjourn. Sarah Muska, twenty-five, make the last.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. It's a non-debatable motion. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned at seven thirty-four.
That's so long.
Yeah, so, so what we're gonna do, we're gonna cancel our regular meeting on the eighteen, and we'll just do a special meeting on the sixteen after the. Just as. Two nights out. There'll be, there'll be a little ceremony. Okay, we're gonna return to the call of the agenda. We are reconvening at seven thirty-five, and we are on agenda item nine C, tax refunds.
Move, we approve the tax refunds totaling eight hundred ninety-four dollars and sixty-six cents.
Second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, the charter requires the, with a new board, the appointment of deputy first selectman. Are there nominations?
I would nominate Sarah Muska for deputy first selectman.
Are there other nominations?
I nominate Maria Susa.
Are there other nominations? I ask again, are there other nominations? All in favor of Sarah Muska as deputy first selectman, please say aye.
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 All in favor of me, Marie De Souza as deputy first selectman, please say aye.
Aye.
There is a tie. I will pass my vote for Marie De Souza. Congratulations, and thank you for serving. We were just gonna. Okay, nine E, authorization of the Beta Group contract. So, that was sent to you in yesterday or the day before. So here's the deal with this. This is the project that we approved in the springtime or the summertime. They are commencing work on Wednesday next week. And that involves the public outreach component of the master plan development. They provided a different contract than we had seen previously that we need any authorization to sign. It is with Josh for review. So what I would like is an authorization to sign the contract with the Beta Group pending the review from the town attorney. Is there a second?
All seconded.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we're on a nine, this one is true. So, the Greater Together Community Fund Advisory Group is about to make their awards for the grant program that they're running. One of the conditions that they require applicants to have before they make that funding announcement or a, a, a word, I guess, is if they're not a five oh one C three, they need to have a fiscal sponsor. So we have been approved, approached by four different entities to serve as fiscal sponsor for their potential awards. Seems a little cart before the horse because you think that that would be a step they would make after they had decided who they're going to fund, but the deadline for submission for the fiscal sponsors, according to the Greater Together Community Fund Advisory Council is to have them signed by tomorrow. So the groups that have reached out to us asking for support, one of them is Belvedere Polish Deli. One of them is the Diversity Council. One of them is the Arts and Culture group. And one of them is the East Windsor Housing Authority. The projects, I'm just gonna write those out so I can remember what I'm telling you guys. So, so Belvedere is interested in doing a marketing campaign to basically expand the footprint of their business. Arts and Culture Group. I think she said that was for the origami competitions, right? I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. I can find the answer to that in a second. The Diversity Council is interesting, interested in doing a series of conversations on inherent bias. And the Housing Authority is interested in doing a nutrition education program for their residents. Mrs. Laborious, do you remember offhand what the Arts and Culture submission was?
I think they were talking about various, various activities that they would be doing as far as performance. So it was not totally clear about all of it, but it was, I think, more about performance art and providing that.
Okay, thank you.
Could you repeat the Belvedere Polish Deli one?
There's a marketing campaign to expand the footprint of their business.
Thank you.
So, those are the four projects. I've spoken with the treasurer, and her office is fine serving as a fiscal sponsor for, for two of them, for the Arts and Culture Group and for the Diversity Council. It's not entirely clear to me why they would need a fiscal agent because they're effectively part of the town. So we, we're making the agreement with ourselves, effectively. I didn't get clarity as to, housing is not, and they're not, they don't have five oh ones in status, so I understand why they do. But the Arts and Culture and the Diversity Groups, I, I, I don't fully understand, but I don't wanna hinder an award with them either, so I'd rather just have us if, if the, or have us grant approval for that. And then sort it out with the, the Diversity, the Greater Together Group if they in fact award those people I just listed in funding, which I'm not sure they will. I don't know that.
Right.
So, what, what I'm trying to do here is make, make sure the town is in a position to be as supportive of the applicants as we need to be before we really know if there, if there is a need for that. Is there questions or comments on that?
Yeah, so Arts and Culture and Performance, you know, Arts and Culture and Diversity, I can understand because they don't have, you know, you don't have line items for them, they don't have a budget. But they're us, but they are us, right, but they don't have a placeholder essentially to, you know, they're granted money. They don't, in our budget or whatever you might call it, don't have a placeholder within, so that I understand. Belvedere, I'm not even understanding how they're even can be a recipient of this award.
That's not our determination to make, and, and absent that determination from the, the awarding, awarding party, I'm just trying to cover our bases.
I, I just don't see how they meet the criteria. No, but it's like there was certain criteria that was put forth by the Greater Hartford that.
I don't know, I don't know if they have passed muster on, on that group. As you know, there is that separation between them and government.
Right.
I agree with you that we shouldn't, you know, we don't wanna hinder someone getting money. We should put this in place for now, and, and we don't know if they're getting awarded or not, but.
Can I have, if there are any other comments or discussion? I have a motion to authorize my signature on a fiscal sponsor agreement between each of those four entities.
So.
Is there a second? Discussion?
I'm not sure the town should be entering agreement with a business to be a fiscal sponsor.
You wanna do that one separately?
Yeah.
Okay, so Maker, was you, right?
Yeah, I can amend it to just be the Diversity Council, Arts and Culture Commission, and East Windsor Housing Authority.
Will you give me your second?
Yes.
Further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? About Belvedere? Greater Together Community Fund, the fiscal sponsor agreement.
Oh, move that authorize the first selectman Jason Bowza to sign the fiscal sponsor agreement with or Greater Hartford Community Fund, sorry?
No.
With us and, okay, with the town of East Windsor and Belvedere Polish Deli, right? Okay.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
Did anybody see anything? Excludes them from us, forget about what they're gonna want from us?
And there it speaks to who can be the fiscal agents.
But it doesn't say.
The awardings will be determined by the commissioner.
By the commission, yeah.
Further discussion?
I agree with Sarah. I think it's gonna be up to the Greater Hartford Foundation figure that out, and I'm sure they'll come to the right decision. Well, what I'm, I'm not opposed to them granting an award to Belvedere. What I'm opposed to is the town being in a fiscal agreement.
My understanding is that, that even individuals were eligible to apply, or individual groups were eligible to apply, but they needed a fiscal, fiscal agent. So if Yumi and Marie had an application that we wanted to submit, and there was a potential that we would be awarded for, we would still need a fiscal agent that, that met whatever the terms of this agreement are. In that case, we would come to the town or come to a five oh one C or whatever it is, and ask them to effectively house the money for us. The difference between three individual citizens and a business is, I'm not sure what.
It doesn't make sense to you.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So what I'm gonna do then, I, I will sign those agreements with those groups if they're funded.
Right.
It, it seems, it seems a little stupid. I would have liked to have done you know, after we knew who was going to get funded, come to us and ask us to do it, but this is the way that it's set up, and I don't wanna interfere with that.
Right, oh yeah, you're not signing it until we know their recipients.
Can you read the motion, please?
We're only authorizing to sign anyway, so it's not like.
Signing unless they are.
Yeah, you're not telling me to, you're allowing.
Yes.
Then I don't think we need to amend it, right?
The last motion I got from you guys was authorize first left to sign fiscal sponsorship agreement with Charles East Windsor and Belvedere.
Okay, so are we satisfied? Are we up to ten?
Yes.
I was being facetious when I said this was going to be short, but it's going to be short. Okay, so, first of all, I would like to start off with a word congratulations to Peg Hoffman, who has announced her retirement from town service at the end of the year. Peg has been a constant presence in town government for many years, working in our Parks and Rec Department and more recently in the Planning Department. When she leaves, she will take a wealth of institutional knowledge with her that cannot be easily replaced and has proven invaluable on many occasions. Please join me in wishing Peg the very best in her next chapter, but we will still get to see her from time to time because she has agreed to continue doing minutes for the various boards that she supports, including ours. So Peg, congratulations, and we're glad we still have you. Secondly, I want to extend my most heartfelt congratulations to those candidates for public office who were elected on Tuesday. Your service to our community is appreciated, and to those who ran but were not successful, thank you for putting your name forward. We hope you'll do so again. Everyone has something to offer to make our community an even better place, and running for office is a difficult thing, no matter the outcome. On November first, town staff and I met with representatives from Raytheon and from the State Historic Preservation Office. Town once again requested that Raytheon remediate the broader mill property to industrial standards for majority of the property with a portion of the property being remediated to residential standards. Town continues to believe that this site is better suited to residential rather than commercial. The request by the town is, the request by the town is further than Raytheon has repeatedly indicated it would be willing to go. So far, Raytheon has only been willing to commit to remediating to industrial standards. But pursuing this path of remediation, the dual residential remedial mediation would make the property more viable and would allow for the existing buildings on the property to be saved. State Historic Preservation Office proposed preserving the old powerhouse, not the mill building, and establishing a historic district which would make additional tax credits available for property owners in the area, but would not save the mill building. This is all still somewhat fluid, but we plan to continue pressing Raytheon, DEE, and SHPO to preserve the mills that remain on the property and remediate the site to standards that would make it viable for use. Over the last two weeks, we finalized a new energy contract for both town, the town and Board of Education facilities that will fix our energy costs. that will fix our energy costs at eighty eight point four cents per kilowatt hour um which is substantially below um the ten and a half cents per kilowatt hour that's expected from ever source on the open market. Um it's a good price, it'll allow the opportunity for reasonable budgeting over the next few years and will will still allow us to look into different energy alternatives um that could reduce our costs as those opportunities become available. The race grant uh was a great way for the Town of East Windsor to show support for East Windsor based small businesses and nonprofits and other towns and business advocacy groups have taken notice of that. Just this week, I did an interview with Connecticut Business and Industry Association about the program and presented our work to municipal leaders and representatives from the the nonprofit Connecticut Main Street Center. Later this month, I'll be presenting the uh work and the findings of the race grant at the CCM Annual Conference. East Windsor is one of the first towns in Connecticut to commit to this type of program and we've already created it. Um that's the type of business friendly support that I hope will attract new small businesses to our town. A couple of holiday housekeeping things, uh we're still asking for about thirty more twenty to twenty five dollar gift cards to local grocery stores to support those in need for our Thanksgiving program. If you'd like to donate, please contact Social Services Honor before the fifteenth. The annual Veterans Day Road Race is coming up on November sixth, which is just the Saturday. Proceeds from the race will go to scholarships, flags, and veterans in need. Um pre-registration is open now, same day registration starts at eight thirty, there'll be a brief ceremony at nine and the race kicks off at ten. Um Thanksgiving is just around the corner and if you're alone for the holiday this year, you're invited to join the German pub for a traditional Thanksgiving dinner to be held on Thanksgiving Day from one P M to four P M at the German pub. Robert Fire Department has donated a bus and driver for residents in East Windsor in need of transportation. Um any monetary or non perishable food donation uh would be accepted, would be appreciated. Uh we are also gearing up for our holiday sponsor child program from Social Services. Um and this is a little bit of a different ask than we typically do, but if you know of a child that is in need and would like to be sponsored, uh please reach out to Eastern Community Services as soon as possible so we can get them uh into the program. That's all I have and I would recognize, Maria.
Um I didn't have any V A S on meetings um at all over the last two weeks. Um but I do wanna thank the public for taking the time to come out and cast in the balance on Election Day and to all of those um that assisted in Tom Hall in all otherwise, um with the process, which greatly appreciated.
Sir?
On October twenty seventh, the Board of Education held a fairly short regular meeting. Superintendent Dr. Patrick Tudrin gave an update on a recent phone call with other superintendents and the Commissioner of Education. The biggest obstacle school districts have been facing is the amount of students having to quarantine at a time. And um many families are choosing not to test um and have their child come back in person learning before the negative test, they're choosing to keep them home for the um period of time that's allotted now. Student Representative Hernandez talked about all the fun happenings and activities students are participating in in all three schools, including Unity Day, Student Council Elections, Harry Potter Club, Decoration Club and more. And it's great to see students engaged and back in person. Um since we are in Alliance District, East Windsor Schools had an opportunity to nominate a math teacher to participate in a leadership program through UConn. Seventh grade math teacher Sarah Schmills nomination has been put forth for the Noize Connecticut Math Leaders Program. East Windsor High School also has been awarded a five thousand dollar FASFA grant. And the high school is also implementing the program, The Voice for Change, which is accepting collaboration and input from students on how COVID nineteen funds should be spent within our school system, and I believe that's in conjunction with the legislature. Um on November first, I attended the Warehouse Point Board of Fire Commissioners Meeting. There were sixty three fire calls in the month of October and ten fire inspections conducted. Fire Marshal Rich Austin and Administrative Assistant Joe Karen have been looking into deli delinquencies of those who have not paid for fire inspections to date. And there was some discussion of possibly moving forward with a vote on um the implementation of a late fee um huge charge in these situations going forward. Um there are some exciting happenings in town this weekend, as Jason mentioned, the road race. Um tomorrow night, the Warehouse Point Auxiliary is putting on a pasta dinner at Station One on Bridge Street and the dinner is from five to seven thirty and tickets are ten dollars and then this weekend, the scouts will be going around picking up the uh food bags for their annual food drive. Um so remember to leave those out on your steps for pickup and that's all I have, thanks.
Charlie?
Okay, I only had one meeting in the last two weeks, that was Diversity Council. Um they're working on drafting a letter to be sent out to all boards um pertaining to the farm uh worker housing um to kind of steer them in the right direction, I guess. So that's drafted, I won't know more as to what it contains. Uh the Witness Stone Project has been investigated more um with that and other towns have done and um and how they were funded. The Diversity Council also applied to the East Windsor Greater Together Grant in search of funding to hold forums. Um apply and be a web host guest speakers to discuss diversity, inclusion and community connection. And like Maria, I'd like to thank everyone who came on board this year, I thought it was a great turnout for being a municipal election and uh I thank everyone for their support.
Oh. Okay. Planning and zoning, they are another light meeting, but they did approve a new dental facility on North Road. So if anybody's looking for a dentist, there's a new incumbent in town, but not too long. Um and they also, they're using now more of their, now that they're not as busy, their business meeting is filling up. And they're beginning the process of looking at the regs and seeing what needs to be updated and fixed uh with an eye towards the Warehouse Point Study, the Flag Study. Um and then just other things that have been kinda out there that they found over the last year that you know, a little outdated or not, just aren't wearing well, so they're gonna start that process throughout the winter.
There's work to do there.
Plenty of work to do there. Uh Wetlands, also a light meeting, they did approve a permit for a small modification uh in a building in the industrial parks. Uh and then also approved the permit for the Department of Public Works to do the covert work for Highland Ave, which you know will close the road and uh they're looking to do that actually this winter if they can. So um expect that to grow to be closed for an extended period of time when they do start. Um I missed the ag and conservation this week because of work. And so that's it for for the boards, I'd like to say thank you to Peg. I've worked with Peg over the years, uh as many of you have and it's always a pleasure. And sometimes you get yelled at, but it's uh I'm gonna thank you for everything you've done.
Thank you.
Um and I'd also like to extend my correct congratulations to Sarah and Marie and Charlie uh for uh getting back on the board again and saying I look forward to working with all three of you uh the other two years, it's been a pleasure. Um I do have some more in scratch here, I can't.
Okay, uh public participation, this public second opportunity to address sports selectmen, are there any members of public who would like to uh address the board? Yes, ma'am.
I just want to uh say that the town is so lucky to have your leadership again for another two years. Thank you, that's very nice. Serving the community and for all standing up and doing it again, thank you. I'm speak, I don't think I've ever seen.
That's in the Eastwoodar seventy three. Mrs. LaBourias.
That's in LaBourias sixteen Church Street, and so one thing I'd like to say is I don't think I've ever seen two left handed handed people writing for me writing at the same time. So I I noticed that, right?
Really, are you left handed too?
You are, and that's, that's probably quite incredible, right?
It isn't a lot, I've never been in in the room with so many left hands.
It's correct, it's just.
You're not talking politics.
Okay, okay, yeah, all right, a correction now. And I just wanna thank, I just wanna thank everyone for their support for that greater um um Greater Together um proposals, so we will move forward and the wonderful proposals that really kind of span, you know, I think um a lot of committee involvement affecting a lot of different people, so thank you. And while they're, you know, we're in the process of completing all the applications as far as, as far as awards. And you will be in the speaking, so thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else? Yes, sir, name and address.
Comment, question, query, question, comment.
Tom, Tom, name and address, please.
Tom, Mark, Lee, Kingscore.
Thank you, sir, go ahead.
Keep in mind, three laps and four, right? Number two, in regards to this inversion Route Five study, has anybody been on Route Five lately by the Duncan Donan and the uh gas station there in the corner?
Yes, which one, is that Thompson Road?
Yeah, yes. The going north on five is up, we're working, turning right along Thompson. Why did the state make that a right turn lane? They painted arrows on it today.
Oh, did they fill the arrows in though?
Oh, to the right, so you've gotta move over to the left because you're not supposed to go straight to a right turn lane.
See, I noticed this the other day.
I didn't see it today.
They had only had outline of the arrow and then I thought, well gee, maybe they just made a mistake and they didn't mean to do that because they didn't fill the actual, they didn't, well, they didn't actually fill the arrow in, you know, they just put like someone went with chalk like, you know, and just quickly drew it, right? But they actually filled it in.
Well, I did the same thing down at Warehouse Point, that is section two, did the dotted lines for the arrow, to get me back and paint it a bit.
Yeah.
That means everybody has to move over to the left on like a bottom there.
I'll bet, I'll bet you that D O T does not have a copy of the Prague study yet. I'm I'm sure that's true.
Because I could see that to be a problem.
Yeah, it's a step back. Yes, it is.
Just curious, something could be mentioned about this.
Well, I'll tell you what, the next step uh for the study is that it's gonna go to the Prague Policy Committee, I sit on that. Um so I I will raise that there.
That's the why.
Actually promote the gentleman presented to us, we'll be doing that again, I'm sure, um in front of Prague, so I will bring that up.
Very good.
Other comments? We we will have a brief executive session um to include just the five of us, there will be no vote afterwards. Um so could I have a motion to go to executive session?
Will we go into executive session?
Second.
Made and seconded, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
We are in executive session as of eight oh three P M. It's eight thirty four, we're out of executive session, uh is there any further business to come before the board is selecting? Seeing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
A move we adjourn our selection's meeting at eight thirty four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, it's non debatable, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, we are adjourned at eight thirty four P M.